It's 5:00 PM. Welcome to the Iowa City Work Session for tonight, which is May 19th, 2020. And we are still social distancing here at council and hope everyone is doing the best you can to stay safe during this time. Miss all of you here at City Hall. I am here tonight, so hopefully we'll be able to come together again in the near future. So with that being said, I did want to maybe just start off with some COVID-19 updates from our city manager, and he's going to talk about some potential relief efforts and go into other stuff with us tonight. So Jeff Ruin.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everybody. And as the mayor said, tonight, we want to talk about recovery efforts. So at your last meeting, we spent quite a bit of time with you covering the city financial outlook. And with that in mind, we want to begin to talk recovery. We have to know at this point, there's a lot of unknown variables. So we want to keep this discussion at a fairly high level. And what I'm hoping for is at the end of the work session, I'll walk away with a general kind of sense on where the council as a majority stands in terms of the level of aggressiveness that you may want to pursue recovery efforts with and where those areas of focus, at least where the higher priorities of areas of focus will be. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to walk you through about a 12-slide presentation here this evening. Okay, again, I want to start with just the acknowledgement. I think this goes without saying right now, but a lot of unknown variables right now. And that complicates all the decision making that we have as a city, but that's the same for everybody out there. We're not unique, but we just have to acknowledge that it's a pretty fluid situation. In terms of our abilities to offer recovery packages, it would be nice to have a better idea of where certainly we are from a financial standpoint. And some of those unknown variables that are still hanging out there are the future federal relief efforts. You know, there's discussions ongoing right now about a CARES Act 2.0, the HEROES Act, as it's been termed initially in Washington. We still also haven't seen the state legislature reconvene. And when they do, they'll likely have discussions on how to utilize the 1.25 billion that they received through the first CARES Act that includes the ability for them to pass that down to local governments. On the flip side of that, we don't know what steps they're going to need to take to mitigate the pressures on their own budget, which are significant. So backfill dollars or any other decisions they make that may impact funding to cities need to be taken into consideration. We expect a lot of clarity to come in the months of June and July around those issues at the state and federal level. As we've talked about at length before in these meetings and in others, we really don't know the duration of this health crisis. We don't know if it will spike again in the fall or winter. So we just have to understand that we have to be able to scale as well, whether that's with recovery efforts, with our own operations. We need to make sure whatever we can do can ebb and flow with the changing guidelines that are out there. Probably most important for us here in Iowa City will be the announcement of the University of Iowa's instructional plans that will come out later this summer. Certainly, having the students back here in Iowa City means one thing, and having all online classes means a completely other thing for our own health, our community's economic health, but the city of Iowa City's health as well. And then long-term, just the shape and speed of this recovery. If you read a lot of the recovery talk, is questions about, is it a W? Is it a B? Is it a Nike swoosh? What does that recovery scale look like? And again, we just don't know that right now. And you'll need to take that into consideration when thinking about recovery packages. At the last meeting, we talked very briefly about the Better Together Project. There are kind of two levels of recovery happening right now that the city is involved with. I'm not going to cover the Better Together Project tonight, but happy to answer questions about that. Councilor Mims would be able to do so as well. But keep in mind, that's a very high-level regional effort, looking to kind of leverage relationships and support collaborative recovery when possible. I want to focus more on what's in orange here, and that's our city recovery. What can we as a city do to help our residents, our businesses, our nonprofits? And so there's three bullet points there, and I'd say these could almost be numbered, as in have to be taken in kind of sequential order. What we're doing right now is we're still kind of in that assessment phase. What's our ability? What's our capacity from a financial standpoint? What resources do we have to help spur recovery? And where are those resources best spent? What are those community needs out there that we can use? After that, we need to determine our guiding principles, which is something I'm going to talk about in the next slide. And then we'll craft whatever programs we can to fill the most pressing needs of our community. And again, that's at a very high level, what we're hoping to get out of tonight's discussion. So it's important that when drafting recovery plans, that we adopt some values, or I've called them guiding principles here. But it goes without saying, we're not going to have the resources to meet every need in the community. And so we want to be very clear with the community on what is guiding our decision-making when it comes to recovery. Why are we prioritizing what we are? If we can constantly go back to these guiding principles, it will certainly help us communicate what we are trying to do with whatever recovery efforts we develop. So I'll walk through these one by one. And whether it's tonight or at some other future meeting, I really encourage the council to spend the time to perfect these, because the staff will utilize these when developing our programs. And again, it'll be a focal point of our communications for other programs. So certainly, one principle that I hope you consider is we need to make sure we're not compromising our own ability to provide essential services. We all want to do what we can to help, but at the end of the day, it's going to be counterproductive if we get a little too aggressive and are forced into cuts to our own essential services that end up hurting the community in the long term. Want to make sure that any individual or household relief that we offer is equitable and prioritize those that are most in need in our community. Relief efforts for nonprofit agencies should reward collaboration and create lasting operational benefits. Business relief programs should be coordinated with the actions of regional partners and aim to leverage external funding. Any type of stimulus efforts must target Iowa City-based businesses and support jobs across multiple sectors of our economy. All relief efforts should yield enduring outcomes that align with our climate action objectives. This is a great opportunity to make sure that climate action, the crisis that you declared, is directly related to whatever recovery efforts that we put out to the extent possible. And then, as we do with all our city funds, we just want to make sure we're not duplicating benefits. And that's part of that community assessment that needs to take place. If we're going to offer business grants, we want to make sure that we're looking for those gaps. What are those businesses that weren't able to access the state and federal funds? What types of businesses were there? Were they large businesses? Were they small businesses? But really understanding that we want to not duplicate benefits that have been offered by others. So again, we'll circle back to this. I encourage you to think about this, and whenever that time comes, modify these as needed. A quick summary of last meeting's presentation that you received from Dennis Baughnstead. The duration of the pandemic is unknown, and so we don't really know what the complete financial impact is. And the impact across all our funds is pretty varied right now. We have short-term pressures, and we know we're going to have some long-term pressures as well. In the short term, we're feeling pressures in parking, transit, road use tax, and water, and Dennis went into detail on those at your last meeting. We also know that while the general fund does not have those short-term pressures right now, they could very well develop short-term pressures as we wait and see where property tax collections come in and what the state does with our backfill payment. So what we thought initially was going to be more of a long-term impact on the general fund could become a short-term impact, and we just don't know that right now at this time. We do know that we will have long-term impact in the general fund as our tax base stagnates, as we see a drop in building permits, and as we predict that we'll see some stagnation in values and assessments, if not a decline in some areas, we know that that's going to cause some pressure in our general fund, and we're going to have to make sure our services can weather that. So the next two to five years, because we're on about a two-year lag between values and our budget cycles. So we already knew that fiscal year 24 was going to be tough, because that's the last year of the property tax reform. That's where we'll see the biggest drop in the multi-residential category. So we were already kind of bracing for a tough year in fiscal year 24, and now we have this dynamic to place on top of that. So we need to make sure that whatever we're doing these next few fiscal years doesn't put us in a position that we can't pay for those same level of services in fiscal year 24. And of course, we always want to maintain strong reserves. You know, the city has reserves so that we can respond to emergencies like this. I don't want to discourage you from using your reserves, but we need to have some good, honest conversations about how much of reserves that we can tap into and how much we need to keep for our own stability when it comes to our operations, both in the short and long term. We are doing some things to mitigate the budget pressures that we have right now. In the short term, we are eliminating or delaying discretionary nonessential expenditures. Our department directors are doing that on their own right now. We have looked at some capital projects that we may need to delay just to free up some cash flow. We have delayed the filling of some vacant and newly authorized positions. So as you know, the budget you approved for fiscal year 21 had several new positions. For the most part, we're holding off. We'll make a few exceptions there. Most of those positions won't be filled immediately come July 1st. We'll wait till we have a little bit more clarity. And then the council has also been involved in discussions about our temporary staff that aren't working in the furloughs that went into place earlier this month. Long-term things we may need to consider, these are things that we would really get into with the budget that we'll work on this fall. But do we need to reduce our workforce at all in order to kind of meet those pressures that we're expecting in the next couple of years? And how best do we do that? So questions we can't really answer right now, but as, again, the financial impact becomes clear, we'll need to consider whether the general fund can continue to support the number of positions that we have if those values stagnate. We'll have to look at all the operating dollars that are being transferred to the city's capital improvement plan, and whether we need to scale those back so that those dollars can be put into operations. And if so, we might need to reallocate some of our CIP funding, and we might need to look at those projects and have to prioritize those a little bit more. So we talked a little bit about that last time. We talked about the decrease in road use tax and the pressures that we see there. We also know that road funding is one of our most critical needs. So going forward, as we make adjustments to our capital plan, we're really going to have to look at how we can take dollars that maybe we previously set aside for other purposes and put more towards roads, just to fill those gaps that we're going to see in road use tax. Okay, so this is a pretty busy slide, but I want to give you a sense of, just from a financial standpoint, how we would look to fund recovery efforts. And the first thing that we would do is we'd look at our existing operational funds. So what are budget line items that are either unused at this point, or that are budgeted for a nonessential purpose really, that could be targeted towards something else? And I'll walk through these with you, but understand this isn't meant to be an exhaustive list. It's just to kind of give you a sense of where staff would, where our kind of mindset is, and what we would look to, where we would look first when developing programs. So we have some existing funds that are meant for more longer-term efforts, and you have some of those in your affordable housing fund. So as you know, over the years, we've land-banked dollars. We've set aside dollars every year with the idea that in four, or five, or six years, we'll go out and we'll buy some property in the community to support an affordable housing project. Well, you could repurpose those dollars because of the short-term emergency. You could say that the short-term emergency takes precedence over that long-term effort, and that we would rather use those land-banking dollars for short-term rent relief as opposed to a long-term affordable housing project. We also have fee-in lieu of dollars that we've collected for affordable housing projects. Again, our strategy was to hold those and put together a more expansive program in the future, but given the emergent situation that many households find themselves in, we could repurpose those rather quickly and supplement some of the other rent relief dollars that are coming out. CDVG and home funds, we do have unallocated program income dollars. These are these are programs, loan programs that we have offered for years and years. As those loans are repaid to the city, we have those, and those are generally unallocated funds. And so we can put some of those to use as well. With your fiscal year 21 budget, we did utilize the emergency levy for the Climate Action Fund. And so we could really get into that Climate Action Fund and decide if we want to take some of that roughly million dollars and repurpose maybe what our game plan is for using those dollars. Doesn't mean you necessarily have to take the focus off of climate action. There's certainly things, relief efforts that you could do that would be a little bit more emergent with how quickly we spend those, but also tie back to our climate action goals. We would certainly think that that emergency levy, those dollars, would fit well for any type of recovery effort. We have economic development discretionary dollars that are unspent. The council knows we have a 1% contingency line item, both in this year's budget and next year's budget, that can be deployed for some type of recovery efforts. We talked about the capital improvement fund. We can delay some of our projects, push them off a couple of years, and take some of those general fund dollars that were used to support our CIP and put those to use as well. And then we are already looking at tax increment financing and how we might be able to use dollars in those districts to help with recovery. So those are existing funds. Those are funds that are budgeted that could just be repurposed slightly and put to use. We also have reserve funds, and we have our general fund reserve, we have utility reserves, and we have our emergency reserves. Again, this is where you want to be cautious, because these are intended to support our operations. And we don't know the long-term impact on our operations, so we don't want to be quick to draw these down only to find out we're going to need them in years one, two, or three of this recovery. But know that they're there, and know that they're healthy for the most part, and that they could be used once we get to that comfort level. And then finally, we have the supplemental dollars that are coming from the federal government and perhaps from the state government later. But we have the CDVG supplement, which was on your last council agenda. We are getting word that the state is likely to pass down some of their CDVG dollars that they got through the CARES Act to entitlement cities. So we hope to be able to share with you in the upcoming week or two that we'll have even more CDVG dollars to put to use. And again, those can be targeted towards individual relief or to relief for nonprofit agencies that are responding to COVID pressures. We have public housing dollars, Iowa City Public Housing Funds that were granted through the CARES Act, and those will be put to good use in the community. And then at your MPO meeting on May 27th, you'll be voting on how to allocate some transit dollars that we received from the CARES Act. We may be able to put those to use as well. Again, kind of three different sources of funding that staff is looking at now. When we talk about relief, I've kind of tried to categorize things into these four buckets. We have relief efforts that are targeted towards households or individuals direct. We have relief efforts that would be targeted to nonprofits, to our for-profit business community. And then the fourth one's a little bit different. This is kind of what you think of when you maybe think of the federal government and recovery efforts of the past, really thinking about stimulus, and how can maybe we spend more? How can we prepare or move forward on a greater number of city projects and spread those out across many sectors to get that business community going? And this is the part of the presentation where I think at the end, we're going to want some council feedback on priorities, because what you're going to see in the next few sides is a list of various examples that we could pursue. Again, not meant to be exhaustive lists, but different things that we could do and we could explore, but know that we can't do them all. And I'm not suggesting that the following lists are things that, you know, we can do all these things, just to kind of get you thinking about what you think is most important for our community. So when it comes to individual and household relief, I want to talk about some of the considerations that I think we need to keep in mind, and then, again, share with you some examples. So on all these slides, you're going to see the city's ability to pay. I don't want us to lose sight of that. We have to be able to afford these programs that we put together. What are those thresholds for eligibility? Are we utilizing existing eligibility criteria? Are we going to look at new eligibility criteria, such as unemployment claims? Are we going to target certain types of relief as opposed to, you know, the kind of the federal checks, you know, the $1,200 checks? Are we going to think first about, let's make sure that those who are in need of housing, or food, or healthcare, childcare, whatever that is, let's kind of target our relief efforts to those areas? How are we going to coordinate any type of relief with nonprofit providers in our community? Again, you know, the classic example of that is rental assistance. We can provide rental assistance direct to people, but we might not do that from city to household. We might go from city to nonprofit partner to household there and be much more efficient with how we handle that. I talked about the affordable housing funds. I think that's one area that we can move pretty quickly in if the council wanted to look at repurposing some of those longer-term affordable housing funds. Rebates and credits for unused city services, those are all types of considerations that I think we need to look at. So examples of relief efforts, the two in red that have already been done, that's the foregoing water shut-offs and late fees, and then postponing that water rate increase. We could expand the city's utility discount program. We have an existing utility discount program. We have about 450 households in that program that receive a discount every month on their utilities. All the eligibility criteria has already taken place. They've already submitted paperwork. We could really look to expand that. Or you could kind of throw that program out the window and look for a more expansive utility relief effort. We can do more direct housing assistance. So in the last meeting, you approved CDVG dollars for some housing assistance, but we also talked about using some of the opportunity funds in the Affordable Housing Fund to make sure that undocumented residents also have access to those funds. We can certainly look to supplement those efforts. How can we work on food security? Do we look to try to provide some enhanced benefits through existing programs that we have? There's great examples of existing programs out there. There's the Food with Love Program. There's our Double Up Food Bucks Program. There's some good framework already started there that we could help supplement if that food security was a priority for the council. We talked a lot about childcare, and we all know that childcare was an existing challenge for many in the community, and that's going to really be exponentially increased going forward. So what could the city do to provide some childcare credits for those that need them? Maybe can we work with childcare providers to help carry out some type of new local program? Transit's another example. You know, we were already contemplating the idea of a fare-free transit with some of the CARES Act dollars that we may be getting. It could be that we have an additional resources to really focus an effort on trying to reduce the transportation cost that many households have in our community. Employment enhancement partnerships, how do we make sure that people who have been laid off in their positions can get new skills to reenter the workforce? And can we partner with labor organizations or some of our educational institutions? Again, these are all examples of what we might be able to do should individual and household relief be a priority for the council. Nonprofit support, really, when we think about nonprofits, we kind of have two categories in mind. We have the human service agencies, housing, food, healthcare, mental health, all those things. But we also have a very vibrant arts and culture scene that has been devastated by this pandemic, and councils need to weigh if we want to be more aggressive in trying to help the arts and culture community rebound from this. And we do know that they play a significant role in our economy as well. How do we encourage collaborative efforts among nonprofits? How do we leverage some of the existing private and federal funds that are already out there? We can do direct operational grants. That's certainly familiar to us. We have the Aid to Agencies program. We have some framework in place where we could supplement those budgets, do an extra application round, and turn things around pretty quickly. We could think about loans to agencies to really look at how do we help them long-term, right? It's some of these, like the CARES Act funding, those are really meant to help some of those short-term issues. But how can we spend dollars to help these organizations shore up their long-term futures? Because as many will be, as many are kind of fighting for survival right now, even when this pandemic passes, there's going to be challenging times for our nonprofits community. So can we look at ways to help them long-term by reducing some of their operational costs, by reducing some of their debt costs going forward? Direct business support is the next one. There's been a lot of attention paid to this at the federal level. Obviously, we've talked about the PPP program quite a bit. The state has offered some funding as well, but we know it falls way short of the needs that are out there in the business community. So what might the city do for direct business support? We have seen some cities in Iowa respond with business grant programs. I saw one today out of Muscatine, I believe, the Des Moines areas, seen a couple of cities start some grant programs. We can look at, I think what we would try to do is look at what types of businesses were not able to access those federal and state dollars, or where did those dollars maybe not go far enough? And we'd really try to find where those gaps are and help those most in need. Traditionally, in a situation like this, cities would be targeting very small businesses for our relief efforts. And we can expand existing programs that we have, like our loan guarantee program, our CDVG program. We could even look to create new programs. We could look at targeting certain types of businesses, and I note on here, minority and women-owned businesses. It's been well documented that minorities have been hit much harder than the rest of the population by this pandemic. So we may need to think about that as we're crafting our grant programs to make sure, again, following those guiding principles, that we're reaching out to those who need to help the most. I've had some conversations with some of you and others in the community about what the city could do to make sure that businesses open up and they have all the PPE they need for their employees and their customers. As businesses are strapped for cash right now, they may not have the resources to properly equip their employees. They may not have the resources to modify their retail stores or their restaurants, and that may be a good role for a city to step into and help. We'll revisit the Parking Pass rebate credit type of program that really applies to individual households as well as businesses and nonprofits, because I think there's several types of businesses and people that have those parking passes. So we could revisit that one probably in another few weeks or a month, once we have the lease issue worked out on the Harrison Street deck. But there's also possibilities to get creative with that, too. Is it a straight rebate? Do we provide some incentives, tie it in with a community gift card program to encourage further spending in the economy? Lots of different ways we could go with that. And then the last bucket was the economic stimulus. So this isn't necessarily direct support to businesses, but this is more about how can we incentivize activity through city investment. So while I talked about scaling back our capital plan, you could look at it differently. If we wanted to tap into more of our funds, our unused funds, our reserves, and really look to expand our CIP, that's not something that we can do overnight. But as we look at a two- or three-year period, we could really look to bolster the amount- the amount of work that we're pushing out the door. We can do that through accelerated climate action grants as well, and really try to incentivize people to make improvements to their buildings and their homes through our climate action grant program. We've talked, listed here, green and livable wage job credit programs, really trying to, how do we encourage employers to add new positions back? Can we incentivize jobs that are well paid, or maybe that fit into our climate action goals? Prior to the pandemic, we were already looking at a commercial tax abatement program on Highway One and Six, and we're getting close to bring that to the EDC for consideration. So that's more of a fortunate timing situation, but that's certainly a program that council could adopt that would help incentivize additional improvements in the community. And how do we expand upon existing food service partnerships between restaurants and nonprofits? So again, just a different way to think about recovery there. And we can certainly explore these a little bit further. So this is my last slide here. I just want to wrap up with a couple of thoughts. We do have resources to put towards a recovery effort, and I think we're in a fortunate position. Not many cities across the country in our position to be offering local recovery, but I think we are. We just have to be very careful with the speed at which we move and the size of the program. I'd encourage the council to start small and scale it up as we get a little bit more comfortable with our financial effort. We'd first look to use those existing budgeted dollars before we moved into any type of reserves. And again, that's really just kind of waiting for that financial picture to clear up a little bit. And then lastly, again, what I'm hoping today results from the ensuing discussion that you'll have is for the city staff to walk away with just a better idea of where your priorities are. I don't expect that you're going to be able to give us specific direction tonight, but we'd like you to think about those guiding principles and we'd like you to start to talk about what areas that you saw here, or maybe that we didn't present on, that you think are the highest priority for us as staff to be considering right now. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for giving us a lot of information to think about right now. I think it is very clear that COVID-19 will have impacts that we're seeing now and that we'll see in the future. And the reality is, is that people in our community are the ones that are needing the relief. And so I believe that it's appropriate for staff to present this to council, and I think it's our duties as counselors to really look at it and give some direction, I think, to the best of our ability now, realizing that things is going to be on a continuum and it could change. One of the things I've been saying is that we have to coexist with COVID-19 because it appears we could be here a while. And so thanks for your presentation. I want to open it up to counselors. I jotted down some notes and I imagine others have notes and some thoughts as well. So I'll open it up to our counselors to kind of chime in.
This is Pauline. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff, you stressed several times to avoid duplication of any sort of assistance to certain groups or individuals. But I think you also talked a couple of times about the undocumented, and we've heard that over and over again, that these folks oftentimes don't qualify for the federal assistance or even the state assistance. So I think one of our priorities should be looking at that group of individuals and seeing where we might be able to help them out, whether it be the utilities or housing assistance, those kinds of things. I think that should be one of our key priorities.
This is Janice. As part of that, I think that we've been hearing that the federal dollars that were sent out, the $1,200 per person or per household, did not go to households that have at least even one person who is not either a citizen or in the citizenship process. So that could be that this, I don't know how many folks here are affected by that, but you can have one spouse and the kids be citizens, but they didn't get it because the other spouse is not.
What do you mean by that? Do you mean like green card resident but not citizen? Or what do you mean exactly? Or undocumented?
I don't know exactly what it means. I just have read a number of stories that indicate that despite the fact that a part, at least one partner in the household and the kids were citizens because the other one was not, they did not receive any of the federal relief dollars. And so I'm just putting that out there because that will put those households in even more difficult situation because they will be short the $1,200 in addition to everything else.
Yes, that's true for all the undocumented people. If the parent undocumented and the kids are U.S. citizen, still they are not eligible, the whole house. Well, that's true. But for residents, all the residents are, you know, if you have a green card, you are eligible. I guess to put that on there, but undocumented, of course, they are the one who's really get hit bad because they don't get anything.
I guess my thought would be, Jeff, when you talked about not trying to duplicate services and looking at what venues are already in place, they're used to helping the people in our community that have the greatest need. I guess where I would be most comfortable is that we at least start our initial priority in putting money to the nonprofits to let them, give them more money to get out to the individuals and the households. They already have the mechanisms in place to help, whether it's through the food insecurity issues, whether it's housing or other issues. To me, that seems the place where we could get maybe the most benefit to the neediest individuals in our community the quickest. And then look at some of these other areas as our financial picture, you know, kind of we get a little bit more definition of what we really have available. And I'm concerned that we don't, as you said, Jeff, that we don't do too much too fast. Let's figure out what we really feel like we can afford. It's not going to hurt us long term, and utilize the mechanisms through our nonprofits.
This is John. Susan, I would agree with Susan's comment on the sector of services that are provided by the nonprofits. I think we have a real, that's one of Iowa City's great strengths. So I think it's building on their ability to maximize and leverage the funds that they receive, the connections they have within those who they serve. That's an extraordinary resource that we have that I think will help us as a city to maximize our reach and benefit. I found this whole exercise of, if you will, of the pandemic and the question of what's essential and what's non-essential to be a very interesting and kind of provocative way of thinking about our response. I know, and I'm just on a personal level, you know, I've really been asking myself, what's essential to me? And so I think as a city, trying to understand what that may mean, I think would be a useful exercise. And Jeff, you've thrown just a ton of stuff at us here, so I'm looking forward to trying to kind of go through it and process it a little bit more. I am interested at the same time with how it may provide opportunities, and I've sent to you all an email on how, from the urbanist standpoint, many cities are responding to the pandemic because it has changed the way in which public space can function properly, you know, with respect to safe distancing. Some of those efforts may have long term benefits. So I think it's, in that sense, kind of an interesting opportunity to explore ideas for how to help our neighborhood commercial districts, how to help our neighborhoods moving forward, both in the short term and in the long term. You know, one example for me would be the, in the commercial districts, Northside Marketplace, the idea of closing Lynn Street from Jefferson to the alleyway north of Hamburg Inn. You know, that's the kind of thing we've done on a kind of a event basis with the, what is it, the food to table events that we've been staging, as well as special events. Think of that as kind of a more of a pedestrian mall where there's flow in that space with tables and movement, you know, from one side of the street to the other. I think we may find that might be of value beyond the pandemic perhaps, and we can test that over the short term. So I think there are ways in which the situation we're in may be, it's going to force us to let go of some of our preconceptions. And, you know, while it's certainly going to be a struggle because of the financial aspects of this, it may at the same time offer opportunities moving forward.
Jeff, maybe you could just share that slide again that listed out the different priorities. All of those looked, I mean, just as you read through them, all of them seemed appropriate to me. But I think if you're looking for a little more guidance from us on ordering those, is that a little bit of what we're trying to do tonight? Or is that too ambitious? You're still, okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, you guys, you'll need to decide how deep you want to jump into this tonight. As John mentioned, it's a lot to get thrown at you and react to on the spot here. So I can get you a copy of this presentation. I'll email you that. And maybe I'll just put it in the Thursday info packet and then in the public will have access to it, too. You probably want to sit and think about those a little bit. We can react on site, but tonight, you know, to the extent the time allows. But my purpose tonight wasn't to necessarily pin the council down and give staff clear direction. It was just to kind of feel you out and get a sense on where you might want to go. But we can revisit this at your next meeting as well.
Well, I would just say for myself, the, you know, the principles that you've set forth here do look good to me. And I think, you know, none of those give me pause. They certainly, I think, are in line with our values and our policies, at least as far as that goes. My initial impression is, you know, the direction that you were thinking based on this presentation is exciting and hopeful. Good.
Well, I really believe, you know, we should prioritize, you know, the assistant on housing because everyone is, I guess, the rent or the mortgage is a larger bill everybody pay every month. So if we can really, you know, focus first, like the first priority, I know that you have it there, but I really want to just say we need to have that the first priority. And I agree with everyone who said that nonprofit organizations should handle this. This is true because they have a system based, they know how to evaluate people, you know, and they can, they have the ability to ride the kick to the bank for mortgage or to the landlord for rent. And also, I would like to see what our housing authority is doing for the people who have sectioned it, because I know some people, they have portion of the rent that they have to pay. Are they adjusting it immediately if their income like went down? And also, I know that there is some people who pay more than, like, they pay 40%, not 70%, up to 40%, and that difference is being paid by them regardless if their income went down or not. I would love to see also what the housing authority is doing. Can we give also the housing authority some of the money to cover those or not?
I think for me, there's a lot of items to think about, but I just wanted to maybe talk a little bit about prioritizing the, how we assist. I think that's going to be a real challenge because in our community, I think we have so many people that potentially have need. We have households that have need, and that's something that if we're going to be looking at how to, you know, create some relief for those that are in our community, you know, we have a lot of households that have needs. We have our nonprofits that I believe can help us in administering some of the funds. They have existing programs. It's been mentioned about undocumented individuals within our community. I would love to have them a part of a recovery effort. But we also have the business community. I know of a business that is, they're struggling. And where PPP money has been readily available through, to others throughout our community, there are some businesses that either they're not in the loop as to how to fill out for some of these items. Maybe they were so stressed out, but to really navigate some relief efforts. I'm very happy to know that we have a group that is meeting, and that is the one that Councilor Mims is appointed to. And that is where, better together, they'll be navigating various things. And I'm not sure how that all play out, but I, one big thing is, I think that will be beneficial, is just information sharing and trying to reach those communities or individuals, businesses or individuals that have, that may just need some resources and some information to be successful during this time. I like the idea of, for the businesses, potentially looking at them a little more, whereas loans to agencies to help their survival. But there's, our community is widely impacted. I know that we won't be able to do everything. I will say for the parking garages, I hear some creative ideas, and I may just say that we might want to really zone it into maybe a rebate refunding those parking garage passes or giving credit for future parking or something like that. There's rationale behind that. We did open up those garages without any fee, and so people were still paying. So I think that's the only rationale that I have. Not to get into any more minutia on anything, but I want to appreciate and say thanks to Jeff for all the work that you and staff have done to bring some thoughts and ideas to us. And please have this in our next packet so we can really think about it because there's a lot to think about.
Could I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I agree with the nonprofit focus. I also think that as we go forward, it's helpful for the city to focus on things that either already exist within the city's toolbox, like utility rebates or reduction in utility bills, helping to some extent with that, the proposal that Jeff you made with respect to transit, because I think we can think of things in different baskets, and one basket can be basically as ability to live at home, and then people are going to need to get back to work. How do you do that? You do that through public transit, you do it through daycare, but you live based on your rent and your ability to pay utilities. And that's sort of how I'm focusing on things. Sorry for the background noise here.
I think a lot of us can piggyback off that. Oh, go right ahead, Ryan, please.
Oh, I just wanted to echo something quickly and just bring aware of the fact that the eviction freeze is ending next Wednesday. And so that is something to consider in relief plans, is that many people, if they haven't been able to pay their rents, if their landlord chooses to go ahead and with the eviction proceedings, that can start again next week. So that may be something to look at when talking about the financial needs and direct assistance is, are people going to be forced out of their homes in the middle of a pandemic?
Thank you, Ryan. I was really trying to bring that, and I forgot, because we have to add quickly about this, really. You know, I don't know if like waiting to the next council meeting and maybe until we come up with something will be ideal, because some people are not paying the rent of March and April and May, and now June is coming, and those people are not, they are the ones who are going to be evicted because they have rent accumulated there. I just wish the council will act on this quickly so Jeff have a clear idea what to do. And I just like everything that you put together, and this is the base. We just have to add a little thing on it, and we can just act quickly.
Do we have any idea what Johnson County is going to do on evictions? Lynn County has said that they are going to proceed after the 27th. The last I heard, Johnson County had made no decision.
I have not heard a decision communicated publicly, Janice.
Nor have I. I can, I can, I know there are conversations going on, but I haven't heard anything definitive. I don't think, I'm trying to pull up the Supreme Court's order right now, but I'm not sure they're even going to schedule evictions in June, but let me pull that up and I'll look at it.
While, while that conversation is, I think, very important, I do wonder if we don't consider allocating some funds that may not be controversial amongst us. I think about the land banking. I know what those dollars have been used for or are intended for, but potentially we could look at allocating that, and I don't know if that's something that Jeff want to take back to staff and maybe make recommendations to council. One thing is the urgency of it, or potential urgency of it. If people are going to be evicted, I think that is something that we want to at least look at within our community. That would be one immediate action that we could take.
We could do, we could put together a suggestion for your, for your next meeting on rental emergencies. One of the, you know, we were going to look at 60% of our CARES Act allocation from CDVG to go to that purpose. We still don't have authorization to get that, get those monies out the door, and with the state possibly adding money to that, we may not be able to get it out in the next few weeks because there's some additional work that has to go to incorporate a new allocation of federal dollars. So we could look at, looking at some of our, we could look at some of our existing budget line items and get some rental relief monies out the door quicker, knowing that the CARES Act will come later in June. We would look towards those existing budget line items, like I, like I said, so we could, we could sketch something out for you for your, for your first June meeting if you'd like.
Jeff, you're saying that the 410, you still have something to do with it, because I thought you told me last time, we need to spend that as soon as possible.
Yeah, so what we did is we got council approval. We went through and did all the, all the kind of the paperwork and approvals that were needed, but we still don't have the authority to spend it from HUD. Basically, we were getting everything ready to go, and then once HUD gives us the green light, we're able to move forward. The final rules on what are the eligible expenses are for those funds have not been established yet, and that's what we're waiting on. So that could be, you know, there's good news and bad news here. You know, our 400 may end up being closer to a million dollars worth of funding with the new money from the state. So that's great news, but that's going to cause a whole nother set of approvals potentially and delay in getting those dollars out the door. We're going to try to do everything we can to get those dollars spent as quickly as possible. But if, if your, if your direction tonight is we need to move very quickly on rental assistance, what we're probably going to have to do is get some local funds out the door first and then let the, let the federal funds supplement those, hopefully later in June.
But if you don't know the guideline, how we're gonna, like, use, you mean, like, use local fund, and when we get the federal fund, just replace the fund? The problem is if we don't know the guideline, how they supposed to use those, or you have those things, like you have the guideline?
Yeah, so what I would suggest is, I'm going to pick a number, don't hold me to this, but if the city came up with $200,000 or two, yeah, say $200,000 of local money, we could put our own rules to that. We can work with our nonprofit partners and say, you know, here's the rules on how to spend that, and we can move as quickly as we need to. The federal dollars that we get in after that would not replace what we would spend. They would supplement it, so they would be on top of what we spend, so.
Oh, okay.
We, you know, it wouldn't be, this isn't a cash advance that gets paid back with federal dollars. This is a cash advance to address an emergency that you're seeing, and then knowing that those funds aren't going to stretch very far, they hopefully will stretch far enough to a point in time when the CARES Act dollars can then be added to the pot.
I just don't want to use, like, city money that we can do whatever we want to do with it, and after that get our money that's very restricted to certain things. So if the federal fund will be good to use for housing, and if the waiting time is not that long, we just should wait, I guess. But I really urge people to do that, because a lot of people, I know that, they just been coming and asking for rent assistance. I really don't know. This is tough.
It sounds like Jeff will come back with recommendations at our next meeting. So, and we, I'm sure he's opened a council meeting, you know, reaching out to him if they have additional thoughts or questions. All right, well, thanks to everybody for chiming in on this item. Any other thing for this item before we move on?
Mayor, I just wanted to give the council opportunity again, for any other COVID-related, our work session topic is just general COVID. We focused on recovery, but before you move on to the next item, if you have operational questions or questions about our emergency response, I'd be happy to field those.
I mean, this is, I think that Jeff, that you said, you said this, said things correctly at the beginning, that this is ongoing, we don't know what, what the end is going to be on this. I was watching the Johnson County Emergency Center press conference this afternoon. Just. What happens when you have city council alone? And Teresa Brennan, Dr. Brennan of UIHC, said, yes, Johnson County has flattened the curve. We have no new cases today. Hospitalizations are down, but that doesn't mean that any of us can let our guard down. And the best way to keep that going is for people to be considered of other people by, we can prevent 85% of infections by everybody wearing some sort of face covering as, as things, as things open up. We have now lost over 91,000 people. I did the math, that's 60% of Johnson County, if you sort of want to try and conceptualize it. I would love to see us continue to flatten and crush the curve here, but it's going to really take everybody. So I would just make a plea that this is not a curtailment of people's freedom to wear a face covering of some sort or a shield. It actually is liberating because it allows people to go out without necessarily putting themselves or others at risk. Thanks.
I've been actually wearing a shield since you told me about your shield, Councilwoman Weiner, and it is liberating. It really is, and so I've enjoyed wearing it, but I do believe that you're right. I think sharing the message that we need to continue doing all that we can to make sure that we don't see a change in what our current status is here in Johnson County. All right, hearing nothing else on this topic, we're going to move on to continuing the conversation of our strategic plan, which we started. I want to say it was back, it was back when we can meet, so that was prior to March 8. Yes, so we have our assistant city manager, Ashley Monroe, and I'm going to just let you take it from here because I'll, one thought, I don't know if you're thinking, maybe we go through some cleanup language first and then jump into the last item, but I'll let you kind of navigate.
Well, thank you. I do have the document where we left off with some adjustments to language based on discussion, and I'll share that momentarily. Okay. So here we have a couple of the other sections. We worked through the initiatives, included the demonstrate leadership and climate action. We had advancing social justice, racial equity and human rights. As far as I'm aware, council came to an agreement generally on the principles and bullets that we find in these sections. The last time we spoke about this, the section or initiative, I'm sorry, about strengthening community engagement and intergovernmental relations, there was a suggestion to add "and neighborhoods" to the, to the item related to creative engagement techniques and focusing on reaching diverse populations and neighborhoods. So if we're, are we okay with that generally amongst this group? There were not any changes. We discussed thoroughly the initiative to invest in public infrastructure facilities and fiscal reserves, so we won't talk about that. There was some discussion about fostering healthy neighborhoods and affordable housing throughout the city. Recall that we added the affordable housing, called that out specifically in this section. So we expanded on that in this first item to continue efforts to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet the needs throughout the community. So that was speaking a little bit to not only the housing affordability, but also what happens within our neighborhoods and kind of other improvements to those areas. And then through the discussion, we also talked about the activities within the neighborhoods, what happens in those places that make those areas so special to us and our community. And so I added from your discussion, support neighborhood activities and improvements that create vibrant, creative spaces and inspire a sense of place and community. And so I wanted thoughts and feedback from you on whether you like this, whether it embodies what you're trying to capture here through a variety of programming and other opportunities to engage within neighborhoods. So I'll take any.
Ashley, before you go there, I really would like, I remember when we talked about it at the recycling center, I was mentioning that we need to have like clear plan for affordable housing, like a goal for, like, to put a plan, like, long-term plan for affordable housing. I really would love to see that language in place.
I have to agree. When I look at what we did before in the first one, you know, it kind of talked about strategies to improve availability and affordability of housing in Iowa City, but I think that we have opportunity here to really streamline and focus on our affordability or on our affordable housing, and I would suggest that we really do look at some, you know, look at this with policies and, and some comprehensive steps that we can get to really ensuring that we have affordable housing opportunities, developing, as Maz just talked about, a plan with some strategic objectives. And so I do want some, well, personally, I would like to say a little more here with some teeth, that we can walk away and not have this on our continued strategic plan over and over and over, and we really take some time to evaluate needs within our community, figure out even funding options potentially, as well as create those policies for more, just, just so that it's more comprehensive in nature.
I guess my comment to that would be that I typically look at a strategic plan as being more of your high level, calling out at a high level, those things that you're trying to really focus on over the next two years. And then from that, developing what you're talking about, Bruce, in terms of, you know, more details and specifics that you're going to do, and quite frankly, the idea that this is not going to be a part of our strategic plan at some point, I'm not sure that's realistic if we continue to make it a priority, because I don't think we're ever going to be able to meet the need for affordable housing in Iowa City. So I think it's, I think it's always going to be something that is with us. But I think the fact that we added it into here, called it out in the title, have it in that first bullet, that puts it, you know, kind of front and center on the radar, but typically your strategic plan itself, I don't think is going to have the level of detail that you're talking about. That's going to have to be our next step.
I was wondering about the same item. We're all so polite. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and speak. I think maybe kind of in between what Councilor Mims and our mayor is saying is what I would advocate for, which is something acknowledging the Affordable Housing Action Plan. If I understand correctly what that plan was, is that the 15-point item where we've accomplished like 13 of the points? I don't know if, if that's, if that's what I was thinking, if I'm thinking of the right action plan for the Affordable Housing Action Plan. But if that is the case, I think for the next two years, we want to look at what expansions we can make to that, not to say what those 15 points are in our strategic plan, but just that we would actually implement some expansion of an action plan rather than, you know, just having it a little more vague as it's stated here. So that may be my recommendation to kind of split the difference there.
Yeah, I would just add. A suggestion on, on language that would, that I think would, might address some of your concerns, Maz, because I really think that we do need to include the term "long-term" in there at some point, so we're not talking about things that sunset after 10 years, for example. It could read something like, continue to expand and adapt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet long-term needs throughout the community or something like that, that would then sort of say, we're going to continue to work on this, and it's a long-term strategy.
Okay, I would just add that I think all of us had a conversation with Sarah and Heath from the, oh, I'm forgetting, Habitat. And to me, that's precisely, that's a great example of an expansion of our efforts, especially with the emphasis on the partnerships with the nonprofit there. So I don't know that we, you know, it's, we have it in there, I mean, if we, in fact, the Genesis question of the dimension of long-term, that was part of Habitat's proposal as well. That was, that was integrated into it. I think, I think the language personally, I think, is okay. It's really a question of engaging with our non-private partners and expanding and leveraging what city dollars we have. I was, I was very impressed with the proposal. I think it, in fact, I've been hoping for some time that our, our University City program was going to transform into something along the lines that we saw in that proposal. So I think we are making considerable progress, and I would hope we would continue to make progress. And it also, the Habitat proposal, at least in our conversation, had that neighborhood emphasis, which I thought was also valuable. So in a number of dimensions, I think we are advancing this. My only comment is I'd like to see that program in the South District replicated. I think there may be opportunities, should be opportunities, to apply that kind of program in other parts of Iowa City.
I like Councilwoman Weiner's suggestion about the including language to meet, and then added in there the long-term needs, but then I would go so far as to also say long-term needs of availability and affordability throughout the community. I think we're missing that availability aspect of this.
I'm going to say it again, we need really to add that on the language, saying that we need to work with another. like, organization, affordable housing organization, to implement a plan for affordable housing. That's it. We just need to put it there, you know? And so we can work with the people who really want to do this, and we can figure out a way. We've been talking about affordable housing for a long time. We have some here and some there. We asked some developer to give like, I guess, 10% to be affordable, but it's never been affordable forever. That's why we need a plan. We need a clear plan, and after that, we can see how we can fund that plan. But as long as we're not putting it here, we're not going to do it. We really need to put it, now like you have here something also like, "continue implementation of the Parkmaster Plan." Like, there is some kind of plan there. That's why we continue doing it. We need to have this language too there. That's what I believe.
A quick history might be helpful for council. When we originally did, the council, gosh, it's probably been four or five years ago now, asked the city staff to develop a affordable housing plan, and that's where that 15-point plan came through. I think we've checked off 14 of those boxes and are chipping away at the 15th one. And then last year, you see the 2018, 2019 Objective A, which was to modify the existing Affordable Housing Action Plan. We did that maybe a year, year and a half ago. We came to council and suggested that we spend our dollars a little bit differently. That's where funding for the South District program came from. We emphasized rehab over construction through a reprioritization of how we are spending those dollars. We created the Opportunity Fund, which is where we might have to tap into to help with some of the undocumented households that we have for a relief effort. So we did modify it. I think the question is, going forward, if you want a new set of plans, there's always going to be an evolution of the programs that we offer. We should always be looking at partnerships and things of that nature. But I don't think you can expect staff to come up with 15 new ideas. It's really about getting the amount of funding that you need into the various housing programs that we have. So we can do a new plan, a new study. And many cities hire consultants to do that, and we can go through that process if that's a priority. What I would suggest is that council, however you word it here, you need to have a work session pretty early on and say, "this is what we want to look at. We want to look at the policy side of this. We want to look at ways to increase funding. We want to take the South District model and blow it up to where we're doing a dozen houses a year." Whatever your goals may be, that's what's going to be critically important. A plan is fine. We will take a lot of time, you know, go through all those planning processes. I don't think there'll be a whole lot of new ideas that come from that. I think we probably know what needs to be done, and it really is going to involve some conversation amongst you seven in a work session or two dedicated to this topic.
I do wonder, for the meeting today, for this part, if we can agree on some language for this. And then it sounds like, from the majority of what I hear at least, what Jeff just mentioned is that we may want a work session to really dig into exactly what it is that we want. So maybe if the language can be encompassing somehow. Always, like Councilor Burgess, she seems to find a word or two that we can add to be all-inclusive of what we're talking about. But maybe continuing ever to innovatively expand and adapt the city's affordable housing. I'm not sure, but seeming like there's maybe one or two words that is missing in the existing that's there that might satisfy council for today. And then we can certainly come back and go into a work session that really spells out what we're looking at and maybe have that conversation amongst ourselves.
So what if we, Mayor, instead of "continue", what if we replace "continue" with "identify new efforts to expand and adopt the city's affordable housing and neighborhood improvement strategies to meet long-term needs throughout the community"? Picking up on a couple of things you've said.
Yeah.
I think if you emphasize "identify" upfront, that puts the onus back on the council to actually, whether that's directing a plan at a later date or identifying policies that need to be evaluated, that word "identify" means a lot, means something very different than "continue."
I would be okay with that. I think, one thought I have is, you know, with the idea of a work session in the near future, we can always circle back and revise the language in our strategic plan. It may come out of that work session in a more meaningful way, or at least in a more comprehensive way than what we might develop now. But I think the idea of "identify new efforts" is a little bit more concise than "continue efforts." But I would be interested in having that work session and see what may come out of it. Certainly, I've proposed and met with all of you councilors and tried to point toward different programs that are being done in other cities in the state of Iowa. There are other strategies we could be looking at. What I've found is that a critical element in developing any new plans is understanding who, within our own affordable housing community, may be able to take that action forward. And that's what I found interesting with Habitat. They seem to be a very well-positioned organization to also identify and develop new strategies moving our affordable housing program forward.
So it sounds like maybe we have an agreement on language suggested by our city manager? I'm not seeing too many no's, but yes, all right, we do. All right, sounds great. All right, Ashley, you can continue.
Okay, I'll continue. I got most of what Jeff had suggested, so we're all set there. Here is the section where we modified this from encouraging a vibrant and walkable urban core to enhancing community mobility for all residents. We finessed some of the discussion into three objectives here, and they're to continue implementation of the city's Master Bicycle Plan and pursue gold bicycle-friendly community status from the League of American Bicyclists. So this is intended to encompass all of those items within our existing bicycle plan and pursuing some of those other components, education and other measures that go along with that designation. The second is to complete the Iowa City Area Transportation Study, pursue recommended changes, and evaluate implementation outcomes to ensure that community needs are met by these system changes. So that, again, is finishing our transit study and then assessing the potential outcomes of that study. And then the final one is to ensure ease and safety of travel for residents and visitors through expansion of accessibility measures, improved connectivity, and use of adopted Complete Streets Design Standards. So this is taking some of the discussion about enhancement for safety in crossings, access of those crossings, curb cuts and others, improving connectivity, so pedestrian sidewalk connections or transportation accessibility connectivity, and then implementing the Complete Streets Design Standards that were adopted a year or two ago. So this is what we came up with. But if there are things that are missing here or any changes that you'd like to see to this language, then I'll take some notes and take it from here.
One thing I was thinking could be added, and that is, again, this dimension that's upon us now, and that is the COVID and how that could affect our opportunities to explore in, as that article mentioned, kind of a tactical exploratory way, how we deal with the submedia issue that we're facing of maintaining proper distancing in our public right-of-way. So that seemed like something, and as we've noted, we don't know how long these issues are going to be with us. We also may have, as I said, opportunities that we test during this period that we find actually may improve the vitality and, you know, business climate within our commercial districts and the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So one added bullet that I would like to suggest would be, "explore opportunities for maintaining proper physical distancing in our public right-of-ways during the COVID-19 crisis."
I guess I was waiting for somebody to chime in there. But are you suggesting that we have that language with COVID-19 in the strategic plan for now?
Yeah, and that, you know, this is a two-year document. And I think, at least for the next year, we're, if not longer, going to be trying to address ways in which we can maintain proper social distancing in our right-of-ways, as well as accommodating, you know, for example, restaurants having outdoor access to some portion of that right-of-way to make up for their loss of occupancy within their buildings. So it seems like this is going to be with us within the timeframe that the strategic plan is addressing. So I thought, you know, we could articulate it in the strategic plan as something that we are pursuing.
It seems to me that if we were going to include something like that, it might actually work better in the section we haven't fleshed out yet that's coming next, which is to promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city.
Yeah, as is often the case, sometimes these bullets could be placed under various headings, because it is more than mobility. As I said, it's also trying to expand opportunities for the businesses as well. So I think it has relevance under either category.
I think you bring up, the reason I wanted to just make sure though you wanted that language is because I think it's important that we recognize that we're going to be here. This is a global pandemic, and our two-year strategic plan, I think, having it in here, that was something I hadn't thought about. So I think is very valid. And given the conversation that our city manager gave today and even last council meeting, where we heard Dennis talk about our future, I think it's very appropriate for us to fit it here. I would agree with Councilor Weiner that we can maybe have that in the next bullet.
I would just add that, pardon me, Mayor.
Right ahead.
I would, thank you. I would just add that it seems to me that acknowledging the need for that physical distancing as well as prioritizing public health and safety in the context of the pandemic is something that should inform probably all of the goals. And certainly in the way that we've been talking about the city's actions moving forward in the, you know, in sort of the near term and the longer term. And as was mentioned with the presentation we received at our last work session. So if there's some way of incorporating that kind of overarching as part of this plan, as part of a goal, like you said, Mayor, I do think including it in some way, acknowledging it in a two-year plan for the years 2020 and 2021 makes a lot of sense. So it may be sort of over everything, if that makes sense to folks.
I think it makes an enormous amount of sense to have it sort of as some kind of shepoe for the strategic plan, that this is part of the world and the community we're living in right now, and we're going to have to be dealing with it over the next two years.
Yeah, I would agree. Maybe somehow adding some language at the very beginning to kind of inform the whole thing, I think, makes sense.
Ashley, do you think you have enough to go off of?
Yes. I was thinking along those lines where, as we have our plan currently presented, the formatting and that, you have kind of this overarching vision of, you know, an equitable, sustainable community. And there's definitely room within that, the area that follows that before these specific objectives, that we can certainly have an overarching statement that addresses the COVID-19 response and support and security for our community, that kind of thing. So, yeah, we'll work on some language to include as part of the plan.
Great.
Okay. And then the final section, I'm not sure if you feel comfortable jumping into this evening, but I will just introduce the topic and then leave you to any discussion that follows. This was just modified based on discussion at our first work session about the plan to include inclusive and into resilient economy. So you are promoting an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. Some of that discussion also encompassed this desire to ensure that all areas of commercial activity and businesses felt supported throughout our community. And we just didn't get to the content that follows that thought. So I'll leave you to discuss any further or put aside further discussion.
What I might suggest is, if councilors do have maybe something prepared for this item that you can state it now. We only have about 20 minutes before we normally break. I do want to spend some time on offering response to the info packets as well as any formal agenda clarification. So if you have something now, I might suggest you throw it out, and then we'll have to put this back on our next future agenda if we can't within the next five minutes, kind of figure out where we want to be with this one.
I might just jump in and just say that just what's in front of us here from the prior strategic plan, definitely carrying forward. I think we addressed A elsewhere in the mobility section, but B and C, I think, are very important and should continue. And I think D takes on a whole different shape and isn't quite relevant in the way that it was before, but maybe something relating to the future of that production. But certainly, carrying forward B and C would be my input for right now.
I would agree with that. I did think that B could perhaps be revised to say, "effectively market and grow the local food economy and small locally-owned businesses."
Hi, Councilor, Mayor Protem Salee.
Yes.
Your phone is on, your mic is on muted.
I'd like to see sort of built into this, as we talk about, what's currently in C, what's needed for people to be able to succeed and improve. I would really like to fold in there somewhere an acknowledgement of the need of expanded daycare opportunities being a part of that. That's up to others, but I think it would be helpful because it's a really important piece of people to go to work.
I agree with Janice, because it also incorporates B, C, and what she mentioned about childcare, kind of incorporates the presentation by Jeff and those kinds of recovery efforts that he's talking about, that the city... efforts that, that he's talking about that the city's going to need to look at. So I think B and C really reflect on that, and then as well as starting, adding the childcare in there too would be important.
I agree as well, because this has become very huge needs in the community right now and obstacle for a lot of people who cannot even, will like making more money or B, become economically spiable because they don't have a childcare.
To summarize, the, the general take on B would be potentially to include small business support along with the local food economy, as Counselor Thomas had suggested. And then for clarification, item C, we can move over and include childcare as a, as a part of this. Do, include, increasing access to affordable childcare takes on a different characteristic potentially for increasing this access for marginalized populations and low-income individuals, and then expanding that childcare access community-wide. So I'm just clarifying, making sure that it's within this kind of thought and, and grouping of ideas and not a separate item. Yeah, maybe just give it some thought for next time.
The, the other, the other thing that I would, I would mention is, and it also, like the childcare was an issue that came up during the, our council campaigns last, last fall, and that is the concerns about our neighborhood commercial districts. You know, the Sycamore Marketplace got a lot of attention during that period. It's, it's a, it's a commercial district that's received two taxing financing packages. And so it seems to me that considering how we might re-envision these commercial districts as centers of a more mixed-use nature would be something to think about. And then I would, I would add to that, the, the idea of, which this was kind of spurred, another, another topic that has always been brought up is, is the value of small neighborhood commercial nodes. One of the best examples I can think of would be, say, Deluxe, and how everyone wishes they had a version of that. That might be something too that we could, we could consider, and I, I think, again, the emphasis is especially of, of value when you tie it to locally owned small businesses. Those are, those are really, I think, when, when people talk about these, these little nodes and neighborhood commercial, they're not talking about a franchise, they're talking about a locally owned business. And I think the emphasis, if we can, in as many ways as possible, promote locally owned businesses, that's to our advantage. And, and these, these small locally owned businesses and smaller neighborhood commercial nodes may find that their rents are less in those locations. So it's, it may be, again, an opportunity where we can promote entrepreneurship as well as mixed use in our neighborhoods.
All right, with that being said, I think, Ashley, you may have something to go off of for now, and we'll have to put it on a future agenda for us to come back to discussing it. But great job, councilors. I know it's very hard, because these are things that we want to be very intentional about, and we want to have some goals that we really can work on and reach. So thanks to all of you for partaking. Now we're going to go to clarification of agenda items.
Mayor.
Yes.
This, this is Eleanor. Can I just make a quick comment about evictions before you move on?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the, the, I think when we talk about evictions, and I always have to pull up Iowa Legal Aid's website to remind myself of the, all the various deadlines, we're not just talking about the governor's deadline or the governor's moratorium until next week that Ryan referred to. We're also talking about the Supreme Court's order that doesn't allow scheduling of them until after June 15th, or they have to be heard by phone. And we also have the Federal Cares Act, which prevents the filing of evictions for unpaid rent until July 25th of this year for what they call covered properties, which would be things like Section 8 federally backed mortgages, you know, those kind of things. So I, I just want people to, to not get inaccurate information. So go to, people should be going to the Iowa Legal Aid website if, if they need better, more accurate information.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, formal agenda items. Info package, May 7. Now, I know that John did mention, please go right ahead.
I was just gonna say, I want to thank staff for the IP2, the comparison of University and the South District Program. And maybe this is what you were going to say, Mayor, that John had mentioned earlier, our conversations, I think that everybody had individually or in small groups with the Affordable Housing Coalition and Habitat. And I certainly came away from that, and I think the other councilors on that Zoom meeting with me, I think, had the same feeling of, this is a really exciting possibility. I personally would really like to see the city staff having further discussions with the Affordable Housing Coalition and Habitat for Humanity to see how we can work together to really stretch the city dollars. I think Habitat's ability to tap into volunteers and to get donations and do some things that a governmental entity can't do could be very beneficial. And I certainly understand there's certain controls that the city needs, especially on federal dollars, but I'd really, really like to see us try to partner with them so that we can get kind of more bang for our buck and do more properties.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is exciting. I, I believe, yeah, we should look into that strongly, recommendations.
Yeah, I would agree that to really maximize our abilities to help the most people and to have that dollar stretched the furthest, that it's worth looking at. It is appropriate, definitely, for staff and for the partnership of, potential partnership to have discussions and then come back to us. And so I think we're in a good position just for having the conversation here today, and I think that will be next steps for me is to just ask staff to meet with, to have furthering conversations that's matter. All right, anything else on that agenda item? Moving on to May 14. I'm going to get it out there right, right away. We have in this info package, a proposal for our new schedule or this summer. And so the, the June schedule that's being proposed will be the second week instead of our typical first and third week. So it'll be the second week on June 9th, and then the fifth week, since it's a five-week month, on June 30th. Then in July, we would have only one meeting on July 21st, which is the third week, kind of the middle of the month, and then we'll be back to our first and third Tuesdays going in August. So wanted to get council thoughts on any conflicts or any?
I really think we should just go back to normal, and especially now during this crisis, maybe we need more meetings. That's why if we can just go back to normal, you know, like on, on June and on July and moving forward.
I'm supportive of that.
I'm okay with it as well.
I'm fine either way.
Oh, mine.
Me too.
I got three, let's go back and then kind of three, find either way. So I, I'm assuming that we're going to go back to our twice first and third Tuesdays.
Mayor, we'll have to connect with you between the, between the meetings, because we are setting a public hearing for June 9th, so we might need to amend that on the floor. I'll, I'll talk with Eleanor and Kelly between meetings, but we might, we might need an amendment on the floor for that setting of a public hearing. We'll let you know.
I wonder if we really do need to get through our strategic plan and, and maybe have furthering discussion on kind of some, some of the relief efforts. What if, would people be interested in maybe meeting three times in June and keeping the revised schedule, or are people really set on going back to the first and the third?
What do you mean, Mayor, by three time? Do you mean like, yes, a special meeting to do specific stuff, like for one hour, two hour, or do you mean like the whole meeting?
No, just specific stuff that we still have lingering.
Oh, okay. I, I guess, like you mean, like additional meeting to discuss some stuff.
Yes.
Okay. I don't mind that.
I don't know what other people's thoughts are. We could potentially have one, the first, because we know that there's going to be some things that are pending, we could potentially have three meetings in June and then decide if we want to do a, another meeting in July. That would be my proposal. That way we can get some things off our agenda that we're, that we really want to talk about. I don't know what people's thoughts are.
I guess my thought would be is if we're going to do a third meeting in June, it would just be a work session, just have the two formal meetings, like on the first and third, and then I think we still have to have a meeting in July, because there's always things that, that come up that need our approval. So I don't think we can not meet in July at all. I think there, just things just come up that have to be approved, or there's something coming through P and Z or contracts or something. So I guess the question is, you know, what, what else do we have for our work session? Say we go to the second, we've, we've necessarily spent quite a bit of time on the COVID updates each meeting. Do we potentially forego as much time on the COVID updates on the second and really try to focus on finishing up the strategic plan? And then we could see if we needed a special form or special work session after that.
Okay. I, I'm comfortable with that as well.
It sounds reasonable.
But we're going to have to also focus on the, on whatever we're choosing as relief plan, so I don't know how that, the two of those will balance out. Right.
I think Mayor Protem said that some of the decisions, the reasons why she wanted to meet more is because there's things happening, and I think, well, it sounds like there's, we can meet on June 2nd, which would be the first Tuesday, and then maybe, so the next meeting after that will be the 30th, potentially, we can decide if there will be a work session as Councilman Men suggested in between, and we can probably have that discussion on the 2nd, and maybe some of the things that Jeff will bring to us can kind of create that. We'll have time for public announcement if we decide not to do it and then decide to do it. So if people are in agreement, we'll meet on Ju- June 2nd.
For a regular meeting, correct?
Mayor, I would suggest if we're going to go back to the second, that we go to the, go to the first and third, so we're on the regular schedule, and then we can figure out if we need a special, an extra work session rather than going first and fourth. I think that's just going to be more confusing for the public.
All right, that's, that sounds reasonable to me.
So the, yeah, the second and the 16th, yeah, yes.
The second and the 16th, yes.
All right, so we're going to go second and the 16th of June. Any, any thoughts at keeping the July 21st, or, or do people want to put that a little bit in the middle of the month?
Are we keeping July 7th, or we're not doing July 7th then?
We're not doing July 7th.
We're not?
Well, we can, so if we want to do, so it sounds like people are more interested in just keeping the first and the third, and then we'll go from there.
Yes.
All right, so.
If we need additional, we can call for it.
All right.
And then, oh, Mayor, just a question for Eleanor then, and Jeff had brought that up about the public hearings that were already scheduled, or maybe it was just one for the 9th. Eleanor, is that, does that pose any legal issues if we repost?
No.
On the 9th?
No, we'll just amend it. We've got, we've, I think Kelly's already given the, the language to the mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then July would be the 7th and the 21st. And then June would be, so we would just be back to our regular first and third in the month of July and June. All right. Anything else from IP from the, the May 14? Hearing nothing else, then we're going to adjourn for now, and we'll be back at 7:00 PM. And at that time, when we give, at the end of the formal meeting, we'll do any assignment boards and commission updates at that time. See you in about 15 minutes.